City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Seven to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 9, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item is Mayor's Public Announcements. Good luck to the ETHS baseball team. They're in the quarterfinals of the state championship and playing tonight. Alderman Grover is not here because her son is on the team.
It is three to two. We've got two, and we're in the middle of that of a comeback, just so you know. I heard also.
Well, I hope you will let us know when the comeback occurs, because now I'm worried.
It was three nothing, now it's three two, so we're getting there.
Oh, all right. All right. Things are looking up. Condolences to Alderman Tindem, who's not here because of the death of his father, and condolences to the family of Alanti Vallejo, who was shot and killed in Chicago a few days ago. And congratulations to Jesse Mueller for winning a Tony. Jesse Mueller of Evanston, as it said on the front page of the Tribune. Evanston's Jesse Mueller, who won a Tony for Best Actress. In a musical, that's correct.
And I heard the family lives in the musical.
And her family lives in the Eighth Ward, which it failed to say in the Tribune, but we certainly will mention it here tonight. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's Bike to Work Week, June 13 through 20. And what am I supposed to say about a pit stop June 19, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at Fountain Square? Would you like to elaborate, City Manager?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Actually, I'd like to ask Ilda Capricioso, the Assistant to the City Manager, who's going to talk a little bit about both events.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale, Clerk Green, Council Members, and City Manager Bob Kowits. Thank you. Ilda Capricioso, City Manager's Office. Just two quick information bits about the Bike to Work Week. The Bike Commuter Challenge has two before and after work events here in Evanston. The first one is Tuesday, June 17. It's a morning pit stop at Fountain Square from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., as was stated earlier. Basically, it's organized by Rotary International in downtown Evanston. They'll have sponsors at the local bike shop, sponsors like Wheel &amp; Sprocket, available to do bike repairs downtown and give advice about biking and other things for your bikes as you're commuting to work. City staff will also be on hand to get input on the bike plan and register bikes as well. And the first 35 bikes in attendance that morning will receive a free water bottle in celebration of 100 years of water in Evanston. And then on Thursday evening, June 19, there's a Bike and Brew Stop at Bat 17. They're basically sponsoring just a happy hour to promote the Bike to Work Week challenge. So there's some specials going on, so they're just encouraging fellow bicyclists to go out there and meet your other bicyclists.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
That concludes my public announcements.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have communications?
No, I do not, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Citizen Comment. Perfect timing. I'm going to call the first four names. Please give your name and address when you come up to speak. There are Karen Pratt, Nikki Hiltwine, Junad Rizki, and Betty Esther. You each have three minutes.
Karen left. She was here for the committee, and I think she's gone now.
Okay. Excellent. Then Nikki Hiltwine.
Hi, Nikki Hiltwine, 820 Hinman. What does an Evanstonian do when some unexpected, unexplained use is approved in their neighborhood?
Push it up a little bit. There you go.
Hello?
Yes.
Better, much better.
Sorry. They can talk to their aldermen if that doesn't work out. They can go to the city website and look at the public record, the meeting notes, the minutes, the memorandums, the videos of the commission and committee meetings. Transparency. I am a total fan of transparency, because that's where I found this information. I'm talking about Sketchbook Brewing. Here is their business plan. I know you all saw it because I forwarded it to you in an email. And it says right here in their business structure, 50% sold to restaurants, bars, special events, 50% sold at retail, growlers, bombers, and kegs. And I have planned commission meeting notes from April 9. Common culture, nano brewery, blah, 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 retail goods establishment because of the very small amount of beer that they brew. And their operation is primarily retail sales of growlers. April 23 memorandum to planning and development. In the summary, nano brewery, small scale of beer, up to 21,000 gallons, retail nature, customers purchase individual growlers, permitted use, retail goods establishment. And then we come to, on tonight's agenda, and the, I don't even remember the date. If you look at the background section, page 437, because of the small amount of beer production, up to 700 barrels a year, and the retail nature of the business where most customers purchase individual growlers and brewing supplies, the use was permitted as a retail goods establishment. There is nothing in the public record that refers to brewing supplies. This was, this is rewriting history, and I have a big problem with that. Because, believe me, I have looked at every piece of paper generated about Sketchbook Brewing that has come to every committee, every person who's seen it. And I totally would like this stricken from the record, because this becomes the new public record of Sketchbook Brewing. And it's just not right, because there is no mention. And I object to it being added now. And it's on a previous page, too, about the definition of a nano brewery and theirs, brewing supplies, and the same thing. Let other nano breweries come forward and say that they are selling brewing supplies, because Sketchbook didn't refer to it in their business plan. It's not on any other meeting note, minutes. It's not in the video. And I am totally opposed to it, and I would like to see it stricken from the public record, because it's, quite frankly, fiction. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to speak to this long-term financial policy. Unfortunately, what we have here, again, is too much information's given out at the last minute for anybody to digest. This seems to be a typical ploy, and I don't believe council members have even looked at this stuff, really. I mean, frankly, the public doesn't have time, and then the council does little of no discussion on issues. So I'll speak to this a little bit. The idea of increasing the reserves might be prudent if we had government that was wisely using funding, our funding. But I noticed recently the Water Department tonight has overrun its own capital. And basically, why did we overrun it? Well, we probably have done some things, like the Skata project had changed orders, of course, and that was a mess. And then we're doing this study on the reservoir, which probably was never even in the budget. You know, I view these reserves possibly as a potential slush fund, that the council allows staff to spend money without approval and minimum oversight, which the city can already do, of course, because I believe it's $20,000 and does not need council approval. Some, you know, a year ago or so, Wally spent $6,000 for a painting without council approval. Recently, the issue with James Park, I thought, was interesting, because the staff was spending money without council approval and came back and asked for a change order. So it concerns me that we have money sitting around that staff can just go after and take and not really have any approval or public oversight. The reserves are not just, you know, "Oh, it's going to have some reserves here." They're going to cost you the raising fees or taxes to have these slush funds around. So the council better understand that when it goes into this tonight and says, "Oh, we're going to have reserves. Let's approve this." No, you need to ask where they're going to get the money for these reserves, because it's going to either be a tax increase or a fee increase on the public. And that's the issue. So I don't know if they're talking about that or not, because I haven't had enough time to look through this thing, because as usual, it just comes out at the last minute. And frankly, if you talk about the Water Department, we have a $3 million transfer funds out of there, so we have plenty of money for a slush fund, because it goes to the general fund. And here, again, this is just irresponsible budget policy. And it's not mentioned in there, because I looked at that. The rear, like I said, this amounts to a slush fund. It's grossly, basically, they overestimate reserves, like, remember about the issue with the yard waste stickers? That was a mistake. And so where was that covered? Was it covered with reserves? Because it amounted to a 2% property tax increase. So here, again, these enterprise funds are not just a big piggy bank for you to take money from, because it hurts the people that had to pay these funds. Should residents basically have to pay for all these mistakes? Should $100 water bill in five or 10 years be $200 or $300? And that includes all the fees you're going to add to it. So there has to be some control of the spending here. And that's all I have to say for that. And let's see what you do tonight. Hopefully, you won't approve anything without knowing what you're approving. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. I'm speaking on a two, which has to do with the city bill. I spoke with Mr. Lys right before we came in, I came in, and he told me, answered one of my questions, which was, when will the G.A. and E.A. spending report be available to the public? He said that it will be available next month. It'll go to the Human Service Committee, and it will be reported out next month. So April and May. Is this going to be the pattern for the spending report? So what happened to June? So are we going to only report two months at a time? Or we will have a current reporting of the G.A.'s spending, or we will be lagging one month behind? Also, I would like to know, when will the final audit of the close of the township will be done, will be occurred? And will it be available at least a week or two weeks, so to give the public a chance to review it before the meeting? So one, if you could let us know at the Human Service Meeting, since that's where the report of the General Assistance and Emergency Assistance Fund will be reported next, whether or not we will be lagging one month behind, or will the information be current? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Pater Nostro, Nikki Hiltwine, Kay Sayed, and Lon Porter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and distinguished older persons. The issue we want to address tonight is our discontent as residents of the Second Ward, specifically the increased traffic on our residential Greenwood Street block from Dodge to Gray, when almost 600, or maybe even sometimes it's 800 cars, drop off and pick up their kids on nights when it's cold or raining from Team Evanston's indoor soccer facility. Even though their official address is 2025 Dumpster, their organization's website instructs the parents of the soccer kids to only use the back door entrance located on Greenwood Street, directly next door to the residential 2100 Greenwood Lofts apartment complex. The traffic congestion and noise is particularly bothersome around 8:00 on weekdays, when they decide to hold soccer practice or any other events indoors at the Evanston, at the Team Evanston facility. The opening of Team Evanston's indoor soccer facility garnered local press coverage, because Alderman Peter Braithwaite said that he was confident the soccer facility will have a huge economic impact on the businesses around the Dumpster Dodge area. A Team Evanston board member named John Cleve was also quoted by local media stating that the venture would bring the families of 600 children to the intersection of Dumpster and Dodge two times a week. But that is highly erroneous, because all those cars are actually coming to the intersection of Greenwood Street and Gray Avenue and promptly leaving. What economic boost is there if all those parents are dropping off and picking up their soccer kids on our residential street? Let them stay on Dumpster Street. Then those parents truly are a captive market for local businesses. Ironically, if Team Evanston would persuade the parents of the soccer kids to actually go to the intersection of Dumpster and Dodge, or a little farther west, and drop off their kids at the parking lot of the former Dominics store, where there are two traffic lights within 500 yards of Team Evanston's front door, or even in front of Team Evanston, which has, I believe, it's at least 1,000 feet of frontage, an unused parking space, then perhaps they would patronize, these parents would patronize the businesses at that shopping plaza and along the Dumpster Street corridor, heading west from Dodge to McCormick. Team Evanston recently held a raucous benefit to raise funds to construct a sidewalk path down the five-acre field behind their building, from their back door to Greenwood Street. That field does not belong to them. It belongs to a plastics, a former plastics factory, which is next door to our residential Lofts building. They, Team Evanston managed to get permission from the owner of the former Dominics shopping plaza to have those same parents park their cars for the benefit night at the former Dominics parking lot. Seems logical that, instead of paying the owner of the closed plastic factory, which owns the grassy field on Greenwood, just south of Gray Avenue, Team Evanston should pay the owner of the former Dominics parking lot to allow their patrons to park or drop off their kids there, instead of creating a nuisance for the residents along Greenwood Street, Gray, and Brown avenues. When Team Evanston board member Lander Brown made his presentation at Alderman Braithwaite's meeting--
I'm sorry, you need to wrap up, or else have someone else cede their time to you.
Okay. Would you cede your time? Thank you. Mr. Brown said that the ordinance passed on August 12, 2013, by the Evanston City Council, allowed a recreation facility to open at 2025 Dumpster Street, and that it was written in the ordinance that the back entrance on Greenwood Street would be the drop-off and pickup site for traffic. However, the official public minutes posted on the Evanston City Council online website for their August 12, 2013 meeting only lists the 2025 Dumpster Street address for Team Evanston. And actually, it was listed for the Evanston Soccer Association. And there is no public mention or reference to the back entrance on Greenwood Street to be used as the drop-off and pickup site. Alderman Braithwaite stated at his May 8 community meeting that all the residents were notified about the use of Greenwood Street prior to the passage of the August 12, 2013 ordinance, which granted Team Evanston their special use permit for their facility. Again, it is common knowledge that residents in our Second Ward seldom receive the official, quote, "public notice of a meeting" by the Evanston Zoning Committee of the Plant Commission, which oversees these types of permits. The only residents who might be notified are those whose names are listed on the property tax records, or who have registered their email addresses with the city of Evanston. If you rent an apartment, you would not receive a public notice of any pending zoning ordinance matters. Mr. Lander Brown also argued that Greenwood Street, which is near our residences, is used by Team Evanston since it's a safety concern for the parents. Actually, that's a lame excuse for not wanting to inconvenience the affluent parents of his soccer clients. It's far more unsafe to watch that steady stream of 600 cars double parked or run through the stop signs at the intersection of Greenwood Street and Gray Avenue. We've seen how those drivers seem to be entitled to plow through and not bother to stop at those stop signs. That is a far bigger safety issue to local residents and pedestrians. So it's not a safety issue that Mr. Brown is truly concerned about. It's that he doesn't seem to want to offend or inconvenience the parents of all the 600 dues-paying soccer kids. Mr. Brown said that the drop-off lines are similar to those at a school, but a soccer organization, which charges hefty fees, is not an educational school facility. So there is no parallel comparison there. We need to clarify that it may inconvenience the parents a bit to park on Dumpster, Dumpster Street. And there are alternatives, many alternatives, in the nearby area, close to traffic stops, traffic--
Excuse me, you've been through six minutes now. You either need someone else to cede time, or you need to wrap up.
Yes, okay. One more sentence, okay. But if they continue to drop off and pick up on Greenwood Street near Gray Avenue, it definitely impacts our block, our residents negatively with traffic congestion and noise and air pollution during evening hours. And again, our issue is transparency also, that we feel as residents that are in a neighborhood where some of the residents have lived there for almost 47, 48 years. We had a recent block club meeting where over 30 residents attended, and we all introduced ourselves and said how long we've lived there, and the average was at least 30 years. And that speaks very highly of the Second Ward, as a very stable community that patronizes the businesses and really welcomes the economic impact of all the great initiatives that Alderman Braithwaite has worked on for the area. So we don't have any argument with Team Evanston itself. We think, I have kids, and I think soccer is a wonderful athletic pursuit. But the only issue we have is the, that there could be alternatives to dropping off the kids instead of on the residential streets.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, was I next?
You are next.
Okay. Nikki Hiltwine, still at 820 Hinman. This is the last time I'm going to talk about this. You won't see me again. I'm going to hide under a rock for another five years. All members of the council voted in favor of giving Sketchbook Brewery an unrestricted P-1 license, which permits them to brew up to 930,000 gallons, 30,000 barrels of beer, with authorized business hours lasting until midnight or 1:00 a.m. every night, in a space in a back building with alley-only access for their customers, attendees of their scheduled demonstrations, students in their classes, and participants in their cultural and community-based events, while directly across the alley is a residential zoning district with homes, backyards, nighttime quiet, and a sense of privacy and security. When Alderman Wynn spoke of her support of the project, can't see it, two weeks ago, she mentioned a document which would be put on paper about the agreement she reached with Sketchbook about a light on the outside of their building and a camera that would allow them to monitor people who might try to park illegally in the alley. What she didn't mention is that Sketchbook can produce only 700 barrels of beer in order to retain their retail goods establishment classification. Any production over 700 barrels would trigger the requirement to apply for a special use in that location. Why was that not important enough to mention on camera? This brewery is opening with Alderman Wynn's support and with total disregard for her affected constituents, who she chose to keep in the dark, ignore, and shut out of the process. There has been no parody here. Under the circumstances, a one-off license restricting Sketchbook to their Phase 1 production level of 700 barrels in shorter hours of operation would have been greatly appreciated, but apparently, we didn't merit that consideration either. Alderman Wynn agreed to add the 700-barrel stipulation to the document, which is going to be produced by the legal department. At some point in time, Sketchbook might actually have to go through the special use process. Hallelujah. Let's see it in writing. When will the neighbors learn the process by which the city will monitor and accurately determine their production level on a regular basis? Relying on self-reporting is simply not an acceptable option to the neighbors. Sketchbook's Phase 1 production level was the basis for their classification as a retail goods establishment, which I referred to just a little while ago, which exempted them from the special use process in the first place. Clearly, a nicely crafted legal agreement regarding their production level triggering a special use application is worthless and unenforceable if their production level cannot be independently verified throughout the year. And then this retail goods establishment classification is a farce, and we'll all know it. You know what? And that's not okay. So I have to wonder--
Ms. Hiltwine, you need to wrap up.
Okay. Is it because he's a Samuel Adams Long Shot winner? Because we are cultivating a speakeasy culture in the alleys? Is it because he's a cast member, a backyard brewmaster, an indie serial documentary about trials and tribulations--
Ms. Hiltwine, thank you.
--of a home brewer, turning pro? Okay. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Kay Sayed. I reside at 15 Williamsburg Court. My second home is 1701 Main Street. That's Robert Crown, "community," "community" in quotes, center. Several of you I wrote emails to. I also prefer to remain transparent. I recently had a couple of meetings, specifically, more recently, with three men. One was a city lawyer from Evanston that Joe McRae did not tell me was going to be at the meeting. That gentleman said I was wasting his time. I'm here tonight to implore you all not to believe what the majority is saying about this community center. We recently had a spring show. I'd like to quote a couple of things that was in the lyrics, as I disapprove. This is not my Evanston. It's not what I want Evanston to be. High School Number, Act Two, quote, "Ride you like a roller coaster. Turn your bedroom into a fair," end of quote. Act One, Freestyle One and Two. Get up on the hood of my daddy's tractor, up on the toolbox, it don't matter, down on the tailgate. Girl, I can't wait to watch you do your thing." As they were doing some movements. Act Two, 15 in the number. I am the law by a young gentleman, 21 years old, who is now on staff, who has been allowed over the years to be intimidating on the ice, to physically make contact with other figure skaters, as do others in his group. I've been there 11 years as a monitor. I've given to the program. My daughter started there when she was three. I've given back to the program in appreciation. Shut the blank up. Four-letter word starts with F. It was not bleeped out. This is a kind of thinking, my friends, that is going on at the Robert Crown Community Center that Evanston--
Ms. Sayed, you need to wrap up.
--that Evanston put its stamp of approval on. There's much more. I implore you, have an open mind and ask Bob Dornaker.
Thank you very much. Sure.
Hi, my name is Lon Porter. I live at 2100 Greenwood. And aside from being nervous, I'm here to say our concerns about the traffic for the soccer group. I mean, Linda did a great job. I think part of the issue is that, you know, I built a very nice loft building over here, and the traffic is really a problem on Greenwood for us. They made some changes. It's a little bit better, but I think it's scary. If you look at the pictures, how many cars it is, how often they're going to be there, and what it does. You'll see some pictures of kids crossing our driveway, cars unloading kids in the intersection. And, you know, it just seems that this could have been, first of all, it was a total surprise to us when we saw all these people being dropped off a few weeks ago. So no one had talked to me about it, and it really is having a bad effect. The other thing is, you know, they talk about there aren't alternatives. It seems to me that if you have, at the Dominics parking lot, there's another nice, long driveway by the Temperance, I don't know what you call it, going south of Dumpster. And one of the discussions we had was, it's scary for the kids to cross the street. I think one of the points might be that, you know, kids, aside from learning how to play soccer, should learn how to cross the street. And they could have monitors crossing them at the red light and stuff like that, and it would be safer, and also not destroy the atmosphere of our neighborhood. The, you know, you're talking about 600 kids twice a week. That's a huge amount of traffic. And it affects the value-- That's a huge amount of traffic, and it affects the value of our property, I think, more than the occasional pizza, or McDonald's, or something like this that these people are going to The other issue, I think, when it starts snowing, this is really going to be a mess. When I developed this building, we were told that Greenwood is an important street for firemen and police. It's one of the important, I don't know, safety streets. Well, if you look at the pictures, you could see what a clog this is going to be over there. And I don't, and I think personally, it's just not a safe situation, aside from the inconvenience and the, and just taking away from the value of our building. So, I'd like you to look into that. I don't know what else to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, Peggy Gregory, Tom Hess, Charlie Booker, and Junaid Rizki.
I'm Peggy Gregory, and I live at 1419 Brown in Evanston, and we're trying to get together our block club, so they may be president, but we're all going to be a team member. So, we're going to all work out, as you can see, we're all here. But everyone in our area is much older, and their concern is about the new Team Evanston. And we sat out there and watched all the kids. Some of the parents were very rude to us, but our point is, how can we all work together to make sure it's safe? And the other key thing is, everyone did not get the material about Team Evanston being in the area. I'm an owner. I didn't receive anything. I did get something recently about something on Dodge in Greenwood, but I never knew that was going in place until the cars start coming. So, we just want to work together as a team, seeing how we can resolve this issue to make it safe for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Hess. I live at 2100 Greenwood. And my points are pretty much echoed by my fellow neighborhood counterparts, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the process. And I think that when you're going to open a business in a neighborhood, there needs to be a process of transparency, where we need to understand what's happening in the neighborhood. And quite frankly, that never took place. And from my perspective, it's diminished the quality of life. We have noise pollution. We have car congestion, and of course, we have danger for kids, young kids, not just kids going to the soccer camp, but also, just as importantly, kids that are in our neighborhood. And I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that next time a business is put in, there needs to be discussion, and there needs to be transparency for what's happening. And I, you know, that's, I hope that's not too much to ask. That's, that's the way we do things in business. So, thank you.
Mr. Rizki, do you want to speak again?
Oh, Mr., I'm sorry. Is someone else?
Yeah, Mr. Booker. Oh, there you are. I lost you for a while. You can have a minute. Yeah.
My apologies, Say. I'm Charlie Booker of 2022 Lake Street, sort of indirectly impacted by the Team Evanston program. I don't want to say too much, because I think it's all been said, safety and congestion and just collage of problems with too many kids being discharged at any one particular time, or sometimes they're discharged, few at 6:00, few at 7:00, few at 8:00, et cetera. I passed by there, and I've seen problems. And I'm sure if we had, if we have to have a fire situation on Greenwood with the way the kids are discharged, I would just hope that the parents would accede to the wishes of the emergency vehicles. So, I think that we need to, you know, with the sight that we're looking at now, foresight being 100%, we need to perhaps, like the gentleman said, do, do some consideration, give some consideration toward fire and safety before we do things like this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mr. Rizki now.
As I listen to citizens here tonight, it's something, there seems to be a threat in all this, and that really is the lack of quality work of, that's really being done here. And really, the issue's not necessarily transparency, but really, whether there's a process here or the process is out of control, and basically, whether these things are being done right. And I've been coming to these meetings for years, and I think what I see here is continued practice of mistakes and not doing things, and I hear this from these citizens, and these are not issues I'm involved with. And I, the things I've looked at, there's this, there's really a trend here of bad poor work, basically, and processes being violated continually. And some of this can lead to legal problems, some of it can lead to other problems. So, I think this council better start to think about this very carefully, what's going on here, because there's a desire, I think, for certain people to push certain things through without following a process. And this has been going on, I, for the last several years now. We saw it with Harley Clark and what was going on there. And I'm going to talk about the water utility again, because there is no process there. It dwarfs the police and fire pension fund and its problems, and it's being hidden by the city. It's basically a serious matter, because water bills are going to go up. There's no doubt about that. And, but adding more mistakes and more problems to it is a serious issue. I believe water bills will go up to maybe 100% in the next five or 10 years, because frankly, you have a mess with the capital, you have bad contracts, you, you basically aren't running that thing like a business. One gentleman said, like, he made a comment about businesses. The Water Department is not an enterprise fund. It is a mess. And I've asked you, this council, continually to show us, give us a real breakdown of the existing contracts and what's going on, but everybody, this council doesn't seem to get it or ignores it. The issue is, if you have a business, you need to know what your existing business is doing before you run around other suburbs and pretend you're going to spend a billion dollars and run pipes between the other suburbs in the city and enlarge the water plant. And those numbers don't make any sense. So, I think it's really time, some of you demand, that this, these, these city employees come up with a real thing here with this Water Department and show us what it's really doing, because it's frankly, you're going to have a real crisis in five or 10 years when these bills really zoom up. And, and like I said, they are going to go up. And I've suggested one thing continually, that this business be broken into a business. That is, the Evanston residents basically should be paying for the distribution only, and then at the water plant, they pay 20% of that plant usage. 80% of that plant is used by other customers. The bad contracts basically are causing Evanston residents, I believe, to pay more. And it also is undercapitalized, and that's another big issue. So, frankly, there's some real serious questions here, and I realize the other issues tonight are small, but this is going to make water bills very expensive. So, any more waste and nonsense going on here needs to stop, and it needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to speak on another topic, but listening to the residents over at Lake Gray and in that neighborhood, it made me, it reminded me of an issue when there was a sports place that wanted to go up into where the apartment building on Greenwood that you have. And we talked about it, and we talked about the traffic, and the same thing that they are talking about now was the concern then. And at that time, the people went somewhere else, so they didn't go ahead with it. Now, the people moved on Dempster, where there are plenty of spaces for parking, letting off people, and things, and everything. When there are business that are closed, that they can pull up in, let kids off, pull out, they're not staying there. They are dropping off. So, why is the congestion for drop-off has to be in the neighborhood to make it inconvenient for my neighbors, which I call them, because I still go to their block party. They have a great block party. But, so, it wasn't a conscious effort. It was no talking to us. When we found out about it, we mobilized, we talked, and we talked to them, and they realized that there was an issue, and they did not go forward with it. But this time, it doesn't seem like the neighbors had any input. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Now, who wanted to speak? You, sir. It's your turn.
I, like Lonnie, am very nervous about this, but...
Give your name and address.
My name is Warren Zenziper. I'm at 2100 Greenwood.
You may have to spell your last name for the city clerk.
Z E N Z I P E R.
Thank you.
You're welcome. A theme's been running through, the word business. I am a business person. I would never invest in a business unless I knew that my business could accommodate the things I needed to do in it. When they built or bought this business, I should say, this building, to put this soccer thing in, there is a driveway that curves in off a Dempster that could be utilized for drop-off. I do believe that that's probably what they had in mind until they realized how many people were signing up. And many of these people are outside of Evanston, by the way. They're not all Evanston residents. They're coming from Olmec, Winnetka, and so forth. It's bad business. We should not be the brunt of a bad decision. It's wrong of you people to let them do what they're doing. It's impacting us. It's making the neighborhood different than what it was when we moved in, and I would seriously like to see you consider making a change. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Next is a special order of business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. In our continuing dialogue with you regarding the council's goals, we wanted to give you an update regarding our look at our existing financial policies and adjustments we think are necessary moving forward. Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, is here with the presentation. Mr. Lyons, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, City Clerk Green, Manager Bob Quitz, Marty Lyons, Chief Financial Officer. We are going to talk about long-term financial policies tonight. It is a follow-up to the November council meeting where we talked about some of the long-term capital planning. If you look at the end of the presentation, a lot of the slides will be similar, just to follow in on that same theme, because that is one of the actionable items that we want to see come out of the policies. So, going through, the city does have a lot of policies. Policies are required as a part of our participation in the Government Finance Officers Budget Award Program. So, we do have some policies, but all of our policies are pre-2008. So, that means they don't really reflect our current economy, and we should look at some adjustments to those policies. So, I'm going to go through the policies fairly quickly. For the most part, I've kept them short, a before-and-after look. We can expand on these policies if need be, but right now, they're in an action form that can be included in our budget. And as you note in the report to the council, the memo, the action on this is to look at adding these policies during the budget cycle. So, that means there's plenty of time for discussion when we talk about capital, a lot of time to go through this as to whether or not this is the vision that the council wants to move forward with when it comes to financing operations and capital going forward. So, policies that we're going to talk about, the general, our enterprise funds, and we're going to add some policies for some funds that didn't have them before, so our TIF funds or our internal service funds. As I noted before, these are the other policies in the budget document. Could have knocked me over with a feather when I went into the GFOA best practices and saw sustainability policy. I thought, this is so up Evanston's alley. And as noted in the report, I think we are light-years ahead on the social and the environmental, the things that we're doing to be sustainable, so it only makes sense to move forward on an economic side. In that case, I think we've done a lot of things regarding our economic development, but we now need to also move forward with some financial policies on a long-term basis. So, sustainability, I don't need to read these slides to you, but it is very clearly something that we need to look at that will keep our services at a high level and be consistent with our mission. And I've referenced this, the more volatile economy and GFOA finally diving into more best practices. A lot of these best practices weren't around in 2010. So, in 2012, they came out with best practices for a variety of funds, and we're taking a look at those. And one of those best practices is to have a minimum of two months regardless of your size for our operating funds. So, that's 16.6%. That's a little surprising. Common knowledge was, the larger your community, the thinner margin you can have for your funds, just, you'll be more flexible. Smaller communities definitely would have, in this area, our smaller suburban neighbors might have three to four months of a reserve in their general fund, easily. Oh, I'm sorry, this was something that was brought up, though. For 2014, and it is, for 2014 and 2015, I do not envision, there's no need for a revenue increase or a revenue change in the general fund to allow us to have a 16.6% reserve. We're above, we're at 20%. According to the policy that we're looking at, we would actually look to send some of the general fund money off to either capital or pensions, because we're slightly above the maximum that we're proposing of 20%. The enterprise funds, these were all set at 10%. And given the high level of activity that our enterprise funds have, the 16.6% makes a lot of sense. We are looking at 16.6% of operations, those funds, and then, a different reserve that would be based on the amount of capital. So, if we're going to be doing a large capital program in a given year, we would want to start off with an amount of money to get our capital program started. So, I don't want anyone to think that if the water fund has $10 million in it for the start of the year, that we need to have a specific reserve for the whole 10 million if they have, I'm sorry, if it's a 10 million expenditure. The reserve needs to be set up to cover both operations and capital, so it won't be the And we will come up with examples, Alderman Reini, as we, as we move forward in the budget document.
That'll be too long.
Okay. Sorry.
Say it again about not needing two reserves. We just have one reserve.
We would have one reserve, but we would, in capital, for instance, reserve for capital and reserve for operations, because the operating reserve might cover, for instance, the very heavy winter, and it would be because we had a host of overtime expenses maintaining all the main breaks. But those same main breaks might involve a drain of our capital fund, so we would pull both down. We can start off with one reserve and see how they, see how it operates. I'm just looking at, the enterprise funds, as people have noted tonight, they do operate as a business, and so, businesses have both operating costs and capital costs. And we need to have that short-term view and the long-term view. And as we come forward with the budget document for 2015, we'll have a lot more in the fund summary pages where we say, reserve for operations, or, I'm sorry, reserve for capital, and then, an unreserved, meaning that's sitting out there for future operations, for anything that goes bump in the night. But something that's reserved for capital means we want to use it for future capital expenses, in the water fund, water mains, or, or water tanks. It will be a lot easier if we do examples. If I did examples tonight, I would go to the one-hour mark, and I didn't want to do that.
No, no. That was a fine.
So, internal service funds, this is something that has changed a lot in the last six to seven years. So, we created an equipment replacement fund that wasn't around before, and we self-insured our health insurance portion. So, we went from having an insurance fund that only had about $6 million or less, about $3 to $4 million in expenses. Now, we added another $12 million in benefit insurance costs, and we self-fund those, so we should have a reserve. And in the second presentation tonight, I'll talk about how we've established that The one part that you've heard us talk about in the budget quite a bit is that the liability insurance fund, this idea of a 25% reserve of outstanding claims or twice the annual self-insured retention. Our self-insured retention is now $1,250,000 for our largest policy. That means, that's our deductible. We're saying we should have at least two deductibles in the bank in the event we have large claims, or 25% of the outstanding claims payable. And that's about, right now, $7 million is our claims payable. So, it'll be right around... So, it'll be right around that same amount. And we have ideas on how to get there over the next five years. The, I did reference the equipment replacement fund. We've been doing a lot of great things with upgrading the fleet, but we still are a long ways away from having any amount of cash on hand that reflects the amount of accumulated depreciation of those vehicles. We still have a lot of vehicles that are past their useful life, but we are making some progress. And I do want to stress that in the report is a before-and-after current and proposed summary of the actual policies. I'm going through it fairly quickly here, but that is on the website. TIF funds, we did not have a reserve policy for that, but we have done very well with our TIF funds, both the older ones and the newer ones that didn't issue debt. We have a couple of communities close by that have serious issues because they had issued debt, and their TIFs are now, their assessed values dropped below, they're frozen value, and they have no money for bonds. So, we've been very prudent with especially the West Evanston TIF and the Howard Ridge TIF as far as how much debt we've issued. And I hope we can get those rolling, but at least we aren't pulling away funds from general operating purposes. So, that's one break. So, now, we're going to talk briefly about fund operating policies, about what happens when our reserves actually change or what we can do in a set of given funds. So, some of our funds can operate fairly easily, and this was the discussion I somewhat butchered. I wasn't as clear as I'd like to be, Alderman Rainey, on the complicated funds. Some of our funds will be a little bit more complicated when we have operations and capital mixed in. I think it'll be a worthwhile discussion when we talk about the capital plan to review how we look at our funds for both short-term and long-term. So, the general fund, our previous policy talked about property taxes. I think the balance, I mean, the policy needs to be expanded, that it's not just a property tax or nothing review. We have a lot of dynamic revenue sources, our sales tax, our utility tax, income tax, all of those can be looked at. But this is the proposal that there's a narrow band there between two months and two and a half months that we want the general fund to have. And if it goes over, we start sending dollars to the, in this case, we're talking about, I don't think I have it up there right now. I would like to talk about that during the budget process. The old policy said pension fund or capital. We can certainly continue with that, and we will have that discussion in the 2015 budget. We'll be right at the 20% mark. No changes to parking and water, sewer, we've added some changes in the fund itself. So, this is still fairly straightforward, that the fund be able to meet its operations, debt service, and capital projects, and transfers be used to cover administrative costs. So, that was just a little bit of a cleanup. Solid Waste is a brand-new fund. This will be a policy that will take a while to bring forward, because currently, the fund, as we've talked about in the budget process, is short on revenues to meet all of its obligations. We still have a little over $1 million transfer from the general fund. When that transfer is included, the fund is actually running at a surplus each year, so we're eating away at the deficit we started. This will be a long-term goal. We, again, will be coming forward next year with a new five-year, I believe it's going to be contract for services. So, that's where we'll be able to look at rates. The internal service funds, again, a repeat, I think the insurance itself, the policy changes that we're a self-funded benefits program, so we need to have reserves. Again, I don't want to go too deep into this right now. You'll see quite a bit of a discussion when we talk about the intergovernmental personal benefits co-op that we're going to talk about next. And the fleet maintenance fund, we're taking away the equipment replacement. And then in the equipment replacement fund, I think the largest policy change is to note that we don't want to issue any debt for vehicles unless they are of sufficient size. So, we're going to do $1 million in debt for a 20-year ladder truck. That actually is justifiable. The ladder truck lasts 20 years, and interest rates are still very low. This, we managed to make the last truck last 24 years. It'll be almost 25 years, so we'll have a nice differentiation of five years between the two purchases. But the 15 years and $250,000, 15 years is set there because the average life of our bonds is usually about 10 to 11 years. Motor fuel tax did not have a policy. Alderman Grover asked a question on that earlier today. The 25%, as noted, it's, there is no minimum, there is no maximum. We could amass two-years' worth of MFT funds if we wanted to, to do a large project that qualified. We're saying a minimum should be 25% so that we can fire the project off at the beginning of the year, and then as we get all of our monthly payments from the state, we will have enough to pay bills.
Alderman Rainey?
The only money that would be in the motor fuel tax fund reserve would be motor fuel tax.
Yep. No. It's, it's an outgoing fund, because we actually spend the money in the capital improvements fund. That's where all the streets are, where all the assets are. The debt policy, we will need to revisit the debt policy depending on what happens with Crown, so I didn't want to spend too much time on that. It's at $113 million as our debt ceiling limit of property tax-supported bonds. We are under that. The refinancing that we did last year helped keep us under that. But if we do Crown and maintain a ongoing capital program, we'll push right up against it. That'll be a discussion that we're going to have as far as the total facilities replacement program, how much will be bonds and how much will be pay-as-you-go. Economic development, the, there is a note in there that the economic development funds can't exceed hotel tax revenues, and the fund currently has over $2 million in reserves and only 1.5, 1.6 million in revenues. So, we, we absolutely have to exceed our revenues to get that fund balance down through development activities. So, this change in policy just reflects the ability to move that balance up and down based on expenditures. The only thing that funds the economic development fund is the amusement tax and the, I'm sorry, it is the hotel tax provides the majority of the funding to it. So, if the, if we have a great development opportunity and we spend those reserves down, that's fine. That means we had a great development opportunity. Hopefully, that will bring more dollars in, in either the general fund or back into the economic development.
Excuse me, Marty, Alderman Rainey?
I'm just wondering, are we projecting for the new hotel?
We have not started yet. It'll be in the 2015 budget. So, this right here is the end of the policy part of it. I do want to go through just briefly what we talked about last November, but, Mr. City Manager, I'll take your lead as far as timing goes. Again, this is the exact same slides that we had before, so I really want to just call your attention. We hear a lot of anecdotal comments. This is our total debt as of the end of 2012. We'll have the new numbers later this summer. But at 331 total debt, we're down still. It is all related to pension that we're up. Our bonded debt is down. This slide you've seen before, this is if we issue no new debt. So, the meat of the final part of the discussion is to start looking at a policy where we, I'm going to skip past this one, that we split our capital funding into two categories, where we say pay-as-you-go is for the ongoing infrastructure. That means that for water mains, we need to have a water rate that is set properly that all of the water mains that we replace every year at $4 to $5 million should be funded from the water rate, not from bonds, because we're going to do that every single year. But a, a new reservoir lid or a, the painting of a standpipe can be funded with bonds, because the improvement will last 20 years tied to the bonds. So, but again, since we're at a 100-year turnover mark for our water mains, we need to move that down slowly through a pay-as-you-go model. Same thing for the roadway improvements, that we need to get the roadway, sidewalks, all that infrastructure in the right-of-way on pay-as-you-go. We have the best interest rate we'll ever see, and we're still paying 3.5% to 4%, and the inflation rate is still 2. So, we still, still would benefit from not borrowing even at these low interest rates. We would still, we still have a cost of money. So, we're not talking about trying to do this overnight. We're talking about a 10-year plan to look at raising pay-as-you-go. And so, this was a couple of slides, very quickly, graphically. This is, which one's this one? I'm not even going to try and do the slides. We'll be here all night if I do the graphics. I'd rather go with this, that we would look at a, I say a capital levy, but it could be utility taxes, $500,000 of sales tax. Some revenue source in the general fund actually segregated over to the capital improvements fund at an increasing amount each year over the next 10 years, with the goal to get up to about a $5 million level in $2,014. That way, we could lower our debt down to $5 million a year, and it's going to be $10 million again this year. Our debt, that will be tax-supported, be close to that. So, the idea is to lower that amount down. Does anyone have any questions on that? Because that's been a very straightforward policy, reduce the amount of debt, increase the amount of pay-as-you-go for a net no change really over the next 10 years to an Evanston resident, but a more efficient use of the funds.
Alderman Rainey?
I have a problem with the water main replacement being pay-as-you-go. It's something that's going to last 100 years. Why should those of us who are here today, who'll be dead in 100 years, I mean, it seems like we're always paying for everything of those going forward. Why not, why not bond for that money?
That is one that we could bond for. The water mains are at 100 years, but we really want them at 70, at 60. They're depreciated over 50 years. They begin to wear out at the, I'll defer to Dave Stonebeck, but we're always spending $5 million a year or $4 million a year on water mains. So, if we do that every year and we borrow that money every year, we're paying 3.5% interest when we could, so it's...
Well, you know, that's, that's fine, and I understand that concept. But the burden still is placed on, it's, I don't want to throw out the hot political term regressive, but it, but it really is, to, to load up the current rate payers. And I could go either way on this one if I weren't thinking of people who are poor, and if we haven't just recently received a shut-off list from the water department. So, it just, I, I, believe me, I, I hate debt. I try not to have any myself, but I just think it's an issue that we ought to think about, because people are just so overburdened, the average taxpayer. And the minute the water rates go up, rents go up. And, you know, people who say, oh, I don't pay water bill, well, yeah, you do, if you're renting, of course, you're paying a water bill. So, I, I want to be responsible, and I know it would be responsible not to bond, to pay as you go. That makes perfect sense, except when you think a little more deeply about the people in our community who are struggling.
Then staff will come forward with the analysis that shows the impact to residents in either scenario.
And you know what's going to happen, Marty? You know what's going to happen? We're going to get a thing that says it's going to cost 4 cents a bill to raise, to do this. But you know what? If I gathered every memo that said 4 cents for this, for, I mean, I've got 400 bucks, you know, after all the 4 cents. So, it becomes, 4 cents becomes real money after a while. And while today it's only 4 cents accumulating over time, it, it becomes a lot. So, I, maybe we could do a 50/50. Maybe we could, you know, do 50% bonds, or maybe every other five years, we could do bonds to lessen the burden.
We are looking at, in this model, the first year would be 90% bonds, 10% pay-as-you-go, and then slowly walking it up. But I, I don't want to belabor the point this evening, and I will work on that as a part of the budget process and what we bring forward.
Alderman Burris? I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, were you done?
Yes, but Alderman Burris, we know what you think.
We'll, we'll say exactly the opposite of what Alderman Rainey just said. I, and I told you earlier this evening that I really appreciate this, and I, if you would have said four years ago that we were here talking about this and you would have been able to put this together, and we'd be in the better, not great, financial position we're in, I would, I would have taken the bet that we wouldn't be here. So, I, I believe it's, it's important that we're, that we're thinking about this pay-as-you-go because for too many years, we were saying, let's put it off, let's bond, future generations will pick it up. And it's put us in a, in a debt situation that we need to start thinking, and we have been, and I think it's amazing that this council has done such a great job of thinking seriously about the debt problem, and you putting this together is extremely insightful, and I thank you for doing this. And we need to start thinking about right now and paying for what we're doing and not leave it to the future. Thanks.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The other way we can get here is by stop doing things and to shift existing spending to pay for some of these priorities. And I think that's been a challenge for us as a community, to really come to grips with things we don't want to do anymore. But that is the other option, and I think as we look at this budget, we will likely include some of that, and we will have reductions, even good times, and reductions to, to some of the things that we're doing in order to free up some cash to further some of these more important council goals. We appreciate that you took the time last fall to come up with these priorities. There are things that are not as high priorities as some of these other issues. And I think we have to, as your staff, come to you with reductions that would free up dollars to fund some of your priorities. So, I think that's another option that we certainly think is appropriate. Again, I think it's probably in small doses to start, but that's another way to free up dollars is to identify services that we would no longer provide or no longer provide at the level we currently do.
I never like to disagree with Alderman Rainey, but I do think that we are leaving our children with huge amounts of debt. If you look at the pension numbers and the other numbers, so pay-as-you-go does appeal to me. Go ahead, Mr. Lyons.
I think that was a nice summary. All the rest is just some charts that, and I don't want to undersell. I think it's a great, a great and simple idea that we could adhere to and bring forward each budget year to say, all right, what's our decision? How much pay-as-you-go versus debt? And make that a part of our budget balancing every single year. So, we will come back that way. And I don't want to muddy that theme up with a lot of facts and figures from 20 years from now, so I'll just leave it with that.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the second item deals with our benefit pool funds that we have shifted, working with a cooperative. Mr. Lyons, I think perhaps in the interest of time, maybe we can cut to the, to the chase here, that, that there are some funds now available to us that we have put aside through this process with the cooperative that will now be available to us to invest in other ways. And so, I think the primary purpose of this presentation is to, slide nine, here we go, slide nine, to talk about what those surpluses are and what our thoughts are for reallocating those surpluses for other purposes. Mr. Lyons, why don't you take it from there?
About three and a half years ago, we went into the intergovernmental personal benefits co-op. It's grown, it's almost doubled in size in the last 10 years. So, it continues to grow. While we've been in there, we've experienced increases, less than half the rate of medical and... inflation, and at the same time, where we've been getting those, I think our highest was seven percent, this year, we're going to get a minus four percent in our PPO. In those same years, we've been putting money aside in the reserve, so that means that each year, the underwriter sets our rates, thinking we'll perform at average, and each year, we've done better than average. So we have been putting in these dollar amounts, going from left to right, you add up the bottom. So we are going to be close to a $4 million reserve on our $13 million health insurance program, where we were at zero when we started out. So our, I'm going to jump to the next slide, and that's too small for everyone to go through, but please take a look at that, because it shows you, unfortunately, one of the great things that's happened to us is, in the part of the pool that we share with 60 other entities, we're horrible, and because of that, they've all picked up our costs, to the tune of over $1.5 million we've benefited from being in this co-op. In the part of the pool, the PPO program, that we have some of our own experience we have to deal with, we've done great, we've performed really well, so, in short, we've kept our own money, and we've leveraged someone else's to avoid paying some claims, and then to keep our dollars, and it comes down to, at the end of, June 30th, 2013, we're at $3.1 million, but we're going to be at the $4 million mark at the end of this month. We are still performing very well, so the recommendation, I'm going to get to that, is that, that we bring $1 million back to the city's insurance fund, and that is done by a letter from the treasurer to the pool, and they basically cut a check, ACH debit, to the city, and it will come right back to us. We will still have sufficient funds to make sure all of our claims payable are covered. For us, that means we need to have about two months' worth of dollars in the bank, because that's how long it takes to pay medical claims, you should have that much in the bank, so we're not setting ourselves up for a big increase the following year. All indications are that we will also have a good year next year. We're the largest member of the pool, so we behave like the pool, and our projection is that we'll have a decrease again next year. One of the great things about this is that all the unions, all of our employees are now on a percentage-based plan, meaning that they pay a percent of premium, and so we got that into the contracts, and they're going to get a rate decrease. Every one of them thought that we would put the, the percentage base in, and that would be a way that the city would raise their, their own contribution costs, and instead, because of the wellness benefits that we've been doing, they are all doing better with our plan, they're actually going to get a dividend. We'll talk about it during the budget process, but that recommend a premium holiday for December 2014, that means no employee contribution that, in December for 2014, because we can, we can fund everything properly, and it's a recognition of everyone doing well in the wellness, being a part of the, the system, and keeping our costs down to basically flat over the last three years. So good news is much better to, to end a program.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, occasionally, you'll hear from members of the public about poor financial management of the city of Evanston. I think this presentation contradicts that 100%. The financial management, under the leadership of Marty Lyons of this organization, has been stellar. He has told you in four minutes how you have made $4 million. I think that's a pretty good estimate on how well the finances of the city are functioning and operating, and I'd like to thank Mr. Lyons and his staff for their excellence.
Next time, we'll give you five minutes. Thank you. Does that conclude your report? Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please? Once again, we've been assured we're not going into bankruptcy. Madam Mayor, the consent agenda, first item, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, May 19, then the meeting of May 27. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and recommend the payroll We recommend you approve the bills of the credit card activity, June 10, $2,184,174.14, credit card bill ending April 30, $132,118.43. We ask the council to authorize the manager to execute a contract for water main lining Washington Street with Furpile Construction USA LLC, LCC, I think it should be LLC, in the amount of $150,000. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a renewal agreement of a sole service and maintenance agreement with Otis Elevator Corporation for the elevators at Service Center and Civic Center, Maple Avenue and Church Street Parking Garages, for a one-year term at a cost of $69,280.32. We ask that you authorize the manager to execute a contract for the 2014 50-50 sidewalk replacement project to Schroder and Schroder, in the amount of $352,575. We ask that you adopt Resolution 41R14 for an OSLAD grant through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, DNR, for the Lovelace Park Athletic Field Renovation Project, for the maximum grant award of $400,000. We ask that you adopt Resolution 45R14, in order to comply, this is the prevailing wage act compliance, that we comply with the provisions of the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act. This requires public entities to establish prevailing wages in June of every year for certain laborers, workers, and mechanics. We ask that you, we're recommending introduction of Ordinance 39014, amending the city code 341 and... Alderman Rainey, could you remove that, please? Yes. This is removed from the consent agenda, and will be addressed by the committee chair. The next item is the Burger Bar and Fish Bar, this is off the consent agenda, it's being held in committee, but will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, we ask that you adopt, agree to introduce Ordinance 77014, amending the city code of 2012 as amended, to increase the number of authorized Class U liquor licenses from zero to one, and permit issuance of a Class U license to Piccolo Theater, 600 Main Street. We ask that you approve introduction of Ordinance 73014, which would amend the city code to establish a three-way stop at the intersection of Wesley and Stewart Street. I think that should be...
Stewart.
Stewart Street, right. So that should be corrected. Next, we ask that you approve for action, Ordinance 64014, to pave the alley north of Leonard Street, east of Wesley Avenue, the estimated total cost of paving is $199,801.36. Funding is provided by the Special Assessment Fund in the amount of $99,968, and the 2014 approved CIP budget for alley paving in the amount of $99,900. The adjacent property owner is responsible for half the project cost through the special assessment process. Next item is A11, is this on the consent agenda, or off? This is off the consent agenda, and will be addressed by the Public Works Chairman. Next, Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and recommend your approval of Sidewalk Cafe for Cafe Mozart at 600 Davis Street. We ask your approval also to amend the Resolution 40R14, it's a second amendment to the professional services agreement with Parsons Brinckerhoff, to extend the contract completion date from March 31 to June 30, 2014. This has to do with the Evanston Main Street Transit Oriented Development Study and Plan. We ask your approval for the Main Street Station Transit Oriented Development Study. The city partnered with Regional Transportation Authority to conduct a planning and visioning study focusing on the Main Street Metro and CTA station area enhancement, to increase the connectivity between stations and the Main Street Business District and surrounding neighborhoods. Next is Ordinance 72014, this is for introduction. This has to do with granting major zoning relief necessary in order to subdivide a lot with three legal non-conforming dwelling units into two lots of record. Next is Ordinance 79014, this is off the consent agenda, because it has been withdrawn by the applicant. Next is Ordinance 57014, this is for action. This has to do with amendments made at a previous meeting, we recommend adoption of this ordinance, which amends zoning ordinance to establish a definition and land use regulation for craft breweries. The proposed definition for a craft brewery is aligned with a Class P1 liquor license for craft breweries with production limitations from zero to three, 30,000 barrels. The amendment also proposes allowing craft breweries as a by right permitted use in M and I districts with special use in, whoops, sorry, with special use in C and B districts. The ordinance was introduced at the May 12 meeting. Next, Human Services Committee recommends council approval, amending the sublease agreement with the Evanston Willmet Golf Course Association for the lease of the Peter and Janes Community Golf Course. The Economic Development Committee met and recommend approval for financial assistance for a facade improvement project for Homestead Meats at 1305 Chicago Avenue, 50-50 cost-sharing basis, and an amount not to exceed $935. Madam Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda, and I move approval. Is there a second? Second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Seven to two, I'm zero.
The consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. A6, Ordinance 39, I would move Ordinance 39-014, allowing the sale of beer at automobile service stations.
Alderman Rainey? Well, I think first I'd like to know why it was taken off the consent agenda. Madam Mayor, I ask for it to be taken off the consent agenda, I'm planning on voting against it, I'm philosophically opposed to the sale of beer at service stations, where people are buying, pulling in with their cars and buying beer. Thank you, all right. Alderman Rainey, do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I, I do want to, I would like to speak to this. This is not your average gas station, this is a gas station that has an excess of 3,000 square feet in the interior space. It serves as a restaurant for Subway Sandwich, and also for Dunkin' Donuts. It has seating for eating inside, and it has an extraordinarily large convenience store, where you can buy everything from eggs to shoe polish, and it has a beautiful setup of refrigeration, sells pizzas, et cetera, all not to eat on, on-site, but, and it is much larger than many, much larger than many places where we are allowing the sale of liquor by the drink. This is only for beer, and it's wonderful locations, perfectly clean, all the time, they have no violations, and while I understand your concern about, you know, driving in and driving off with your car, you do pretty much the same thing at a grocery store, a liquor store, you drive up, you buy your booze, and you drive away, so I don't see any difference in that case. But anyway, I'd really encourage the council to support this, this is a highly responsible organization, and I support it 100%.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand what you're saying, Alderman Rainey, but we've also had problems with applications from convenience stores in my ward that pose a problem, so I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with going there.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 39014, allowing the sale of beer at automobile service station?
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Yes.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Holmes?
Yes.
Six to one.
Six to one, the motion passes.
A7, Madam Mayor, Ordinance 76-014, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for DMK Burger Bar and Fish Bar at 815 North Street, has been held in committee, there will be a meeting with the owners, and Alderman Fisk, and myself and city staff, and hope to be able to report back and have it on the agenda for the June 23 meeting.
Thank you, does that conclude your report? All right, you have A11.
A11, Ordinance 6D-0-14, amending the minority women in Evanston-based employers and local employment program, LEP. The committee recommends a consideration of an amendment to the, to this ordinance revising the penalty from $100 per day to a 3% of total projected value penalties.
Alderman Wilson?
I'm sorry, it was held in committee on April the 28th and May the 27th.
Alderman Wilson, did you want to speak to this?
Thank you, yes, and I appreciate Mr. Lyons undertaking to do some outreach to the contractors, and get some, what I, what I view to be some pretty constructive comments and, and feedback with regard to the program, and maybe some ideas that would help a modified program work more effectively. I've conferred with Alderman Braithwaite, and I think what would make sense is to refer this back to the MWEBE Committee, to make some adjustments to the program, to, you know, bring that, those comments and those ideas into not just a penalty aspect of the program, but also to make some constructive changes to the program itself, to make it more effective overall. So I move that we refer back to the MWEBE Committee.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. That concludes your report, Alderman Holmes.
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, are you planning on development?
I believe, Madam Mayor, the only issue that we have not on the consent agenda is P5, and that is the major zoning relief for 910 Hinman, the applicant has withdrawn its request.
Thank you, that resolves that, and Human Services is done. All right, do we have anything else, I think? Oh.
Oh, yes, P1, S P2.
P1 and P2?
Didn't vote accept, didn't want to...
P1 and P2, we did.
No, there was no action.
Did we miss one? No.
The special order didn't...
All right, Rodney, what, what do you think was missed?
Did it only...
Oh, the special orders of business? You didn't need a vote on that?
Vote or listen for discussion.
All right. City Clerk, are we good?
Sure.
All right. Okay, we are at call of the wards. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, we had a meeting at Levy Center regarding James Park, and the turnout was extraordinary, we had, I think, three people, and 10 staff members, and the conclusion was that we have done so much outreach, that the community is well aware of the conditions there, and all is fine. I just want to congratulate, not congratulate, but comment on the positive activity of Alderman Braithwaite and Wilson, bringing new light to the whole issue of the MWEBE...
the MWEBE, LEP issue. And hopefully, we'll come out with some very good outcome.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Thank you. Again, I want to say thank you to Marty. Really impressive, all the work you've done. And I think we're definitely on the right track. We've been for several years, and I think we're really there. So again, thank you so much. The next ninth ward meeting will be on June 19 at the Levy Center at 7:00. And I also want to say congratulations to the Police and Fire Foundation for a successful golf outing today.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to extend my sincere condolences to Alderman Tendem on the passing of his father. I also want to thank staff for their attendance at the first ward meeting. We continue, I think, to have excellent discussions, and I really appreciate the efforts of staff. Wally, we missed you. And the first one you've missed maybe ever, so that's great. And that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to announce that this, excuse me, next Thursday, June 12, rather than host our regular ward meeting, we will host a special meeting for the Spanish-speaking neighbors within the second ward. So we've distributed flyers throughout the community, distributed along Dodge, and we look forward to having them that evening. In addition to that, obviously, there were a number of residents that came out regarding the Team Evanston issue and the parking. And so in response to that, we do have a meeting that has been on the books for Thursday, June 19, at 7:00 PM. And that meeting will take place at the Joseph E. Hill Education Center. And the issues that we're going to discuss, and I think the ones that were raised were very concerning to me, and that is, looking at the, reviewing the city of Evanston zoning and rezoning process, I received a list of names of everyone that was notified, but it was somewhat alarming to see how many people did not receive the notice despite the announcements in the newsletter, the articles that were written in the round paper, round table. There were still some people that, for whatever reason, this came to like a big surprise. So we want to discuss that. We'll also have an update from Team Evanston, the situation that was discussed. It happened over the first week, just for those that would be concerned. And it was during the time that the fields were not open. And so I think if anyone, and I would encourage you all to drive by there now, you would notice that the kids are not practicing, of course, in the facility, but they're actually practicing on the open soccer fields. In addition to that, in the wintertime, the teams will be staggered. So I'm looking forward. I'm definitely inviting all the residents who are concerned about that issue to come so we can talk about it, as well as address any other neighborhood concerns that come up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank all of the third ward residents, more than 100 of them, who came out for our town hall meeting on May 29. And the staff support was excellent. We had a great discussion about a number of things, particularly bike routes. And it was a very good discussion on a lot of points. So thank you to the third ward.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, could we have a report that includes the baseball score?
Unfortunately, well, first of all, I want to congratulate the varsity team on an excellent season. They did win sectionals this year, which is very exciting. Unfortunately, they did not advance to the final four. So, but I think they have a lot to be proud of, and I think that it was a very exciting season and looking forward to next season.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to say that over this past week, especially on Friday, I wanted to just extend my thanks to Mr. Lyons and Mr. McRae and their support, especially in the Gilbert Park area in terms of visiting with the neighbors and making them feel comfortable after the shooting there. And I really do appreciate that. I really do like the customer service that our staff is providing to our residents when things like this are happening. We have it from the police department, but this was regular staff out as well. So I just wanted to thank you all personally for that. Also wanted to congratulate the Youth Action Ministry on the celebration of June 10 on Saturday at Fleetwood Jordan. It was very well attended and really nice, nice celebration that hopefully will become an annual event. Also, just because we don't have a meeting next Monday, but to invite all of you to join us on June 19 at Twiggs Park, beginning at 6:00 PM. We will start with a real abbreviated ward meeting and then entertainment and everything from Fleetwood Jordan. And then at 7:30 will be our first Twilight, Starlight concert for the year. So please come out and join us.
Thank you very much. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and security. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, and C8.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.